Daryl, this is Brian. I'm not getting any audio.
How about now? Did you hear that, Brian?
Yes, I got you now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for speaking up quickly. We'll try again. It is now 6:33 on Wednesday, May 24, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. We are meeting at the Lunenburg Middle High School in the project room, so if anybody wishes to come on down, that's where we are. And I think we need to start with, oh, let me read this first. "In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast." I don't believe we're live. Are we live? No, we are not live. It is not being broadcast live. It is being broadcast over Zoom and will be available on the Lunenburg Public Access Channel in the next 24 hours. If you wish to join the Zoom meeting, you would have already done so, otherwise you couldn't hear us. But just in case, the number is, the meeting ID is 850-1582-6044. "The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law." Now, I would ask anyone who is able to stand for the pledge of allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. The first item on our agenda is public comment. "The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome." Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes, and comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. So if you do have a public comment, would you use the Zoom function of raising your hand? And we will identify you. And we are seeing no hands raised. So to the board, Mr. Beardmore.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to welcome our new member. Welcome. Congratulations on your election. And I was really pleased that I got elected too. So I'm really excited by the opportunity to serve here for another three-year term or a full three-year term. And I'm looking forward to working with the members of the committee. This afternoon, I went to Town Hall and got sworn in, and I also updated, as I mentioned, when I was appointed last summer, my disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest form, which is on file at the Town Clerk's office. I will not read it into the record, but I just want to make the members of the committee and the public aware that I have filed such form. And in layman's terms, I have a former spouse who is an employee of the school district, is a member of the LEA, and we have a child support agreement, which is very nominally affected by her income. And as a result of that, I will not be on an LEA negotiating team, will not comment specifically on monetary items relating to the contract, but do reserve the right to comment on the budget and fiscal issues relating to the contract and to vote on the contract as a whole. And I just want to get that into the record in the minutes. Hopefully not to talk about it for another three years.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Beardmore. Seeing no other comments, I will go to the Chair's report. And I would like to begin by congratulating Laura Brzezowski and Peter Beardmore on their election to the school committee. We welcome Peter back, and we welcome Board Laura. And I look forward to working with each of you, and I'm sure that we will do great things. So at the May 11 Select Board meeting, our request for APRA funding for the athletic complex feasibility study was granted by the Select Board. I wish to thank them for their support in maintaining our facilities. They also requested that we submit a map of the proposed sidewalks we submitted last fall as an APRA request. The map was submitted in time for their May 18 meeting. So that's the Chair's report. And continuing on, we have review and approve of minutes, regular meeting sessions, January 4th and April 12th. So does anyone have any questions about those minutes? Laura, I think you're off the hook on those. But if I'm not hearing any questions from any member of the board, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the January 4th meeting in April 12th.
All right, then, those in favor, this has to be a roll call vote as Mr. Leighton is virtual this evening.
Mr. Leighton.
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Ms. Brzezowski? And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. All right, thank you. Next, line item transfers. I do not believe we have any this evening, so we can run right over that and go to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to provide you an update. We had several presentations from the District Attorney's Office this week. Monday evening, someone from the District Attorney's Office provided a presentation on internet safety to parents. This presentation did also include the topic of cyberbullying and bullying. The presentation was recorded, and as soon as we have access to that link, we will post it on our website. The DA's office also provided presentations to students in grades 8 through 11. Those presentations were held during the school day on Tuesday and again today. An update relative to the extended day summer program and our early learning center program for the next school year. We do still have available seats for both of these programs. An update on the search for a new Turkey Hill Elementary School principal. The committee was formed. They reviewed applicants, selected several for a first-round interview. And they are actually moving three candidates forward to a second round. More information will be coming out to parents, but we're looking to have all the candidates in on the Tuesday following the Memorial Day weekend. And as part of their time spent with us that day, they will have a chance to meet with faculty and with families from the Turkey Hill Elementary, as well as the leadership team. And again, more information will be sent out to families to notify them of that. Some reminders for the rest of May. Again, the Memorial Day weekend is upon us, so there's no school, and the offices are closed on Monday. I just also wanted to share that the annual Memorial Day ceremony will be held at Veterans Park at 10:00 a.m. on Monday Memorial Day, May 20. Some reminders for dates coming up in June. On the 7th, we have our next school committee meeting, 6:30 planned for Hybrid from Town Hall on the 21st, again at 6:30, Hybrid from this location at the middle high school. And lastly, we have a tentative meeting scheduled on the 29th of June, which is off-cycle. That's actually on a Thursday evening, and that will be at 6:30 via Zoom. And the purpose for that is just to make the committee aware of any purchase orders that are not closed out quite yet because we haven't received all invoices, and they would have to be carried over past the June 30th fiscal year end. And of course, we have all sorts of activities coming up next week relative to senior events. Unfortunately, our student rep isn't here, but Mr. Santri is here. So maybe Mr. Santri, you could come up and just give everybody a heads up as to the events that are leading into graduation. Sorry to put you on the spot. We don't have a student rep. The motorcade is on Wednesday.
It is on Wednesday, starting at Conrad's at 8:30. That'll be followed by a senior breakfast and senior videos. On Thursday, we have our graduation practice. We have some other events scheduled at the high school. Friday is our farewell Friday for our seniors. They get to come in and get a little bit of feedback about their finals from their teachers and also say goodbye. That leads us right into graduation for Saturday morning on June 3rd. Hopefully, the weather's nice, but we do have a contingency plan.
Good. Yes, we were working on that this week, too.
Where is?
The graduation is held on the grass fields?
What is the contingency plan?
Oh, it'll be moved indoors. And we'll have somewhat limited seating.
One class cannot have them.
2016, it was held in the gym. I'm not sure that was because of weather, but that was because we were opening a new building. And it hasn't been inside since I've been a part of graduation, knock on wood, three years now. Long-range forecast has like 30% rain. We hope to possibly hold it in the auditorium, which would limit the amount of people that could come, and then maybe simulcast it in the cafeteria for other families.
These things do happen. When both of my kids graduated, we had rain. And when my youngest graduated, we had a microburst. So while everyone was sitting there. So hopefully, we don't run into that. Those graduations were held late in the day. I applaud moving it to 10 o'clock. I think you have much better luck with weather at 10:00 a.m. than you do at 6:00, which is when my kids graduated. So we'll have our fingers crossed.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much for letting me put you on the spot.
So if that is the superintendent's report, then we have no student representative this evening. Nobody has joined online, I presume?
That is correct.
Okay, then we'll continue on. Our first item of new business is the committee reorganization. And generally, the way we do this, the superintendent is in charge of this part of the meeting until the chairperson is selected. And then, once the chairperson is selected, the chairperson takes over. And for anybody that's listening, or for a new member, or if some of our older members don't remember how this worked, last year, I think we did this at least four times. So the first sort of sundry reasons, what we're going to do is we have to approve the chairperson, the vice chair, the secretary. And then secretary's job, in this particular case, is to take minutes during executive session. Basically, is all that job is. Though Laura also did social media, and I don't think that's a separate job. So that might be part of that job. But it doesn't have to be. We can figure it out. Then we have to approve some existing policies, like policies that we already have, to make sure that those things stay in force. We have some monetary things to approve. And we have to approve the waiver because we allow food and beverages with lids in the auditorium per annual town meeting. And so that's a waiver because that is against our general policy. And then we have appointments to committees. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Burnham.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any nominations for Chair?
I would nominate Chair One. Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Mrs. Ashambo, I assume you are willing to accept the nomination?
I would accept the nomination.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would just reiterate what I said to Carol in a phone conversation this week, which is, you know, I think Carol and I see the world very differently on a number of topics. I think we were both quite skeptical of each other when I joined this committee. But it has been a real pleasure to work with you. I think you've done an amazing job in helping me as a member to do my job better. And your stewardship has enabled me to be more effective than I otherwise would be, I think. And I thank you and look forward to working with you for another year.
Well, thank you.
I don't think this is going to be a surprise, but I often ask Carol questions that I don't have the answer to, and she gives me good answers. But more importantly, Carol is really wise. So you need to stay the chair for a long time because I think that we all sort of count on your wisdom when we have to do things, and everybody's sort of working in different spheres. We've come together and, like with the bus policy, you did a really good job. You sort of shepherding us through that, where we have like five fire irons in the fire, so.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, then we can do a roll call vote. I'll start with Mr. Leighton.
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
I will agree.
Okay, all right. I'll turn it back over to the Chair.
All right, so now, thank you very much. So now, what we need to do is select the vice chair. Nominations for vice chair. I would like to make that nomination. I'd like to nominate Mr. Leighton once again. Are there any other nominations?
I'll second your nomination, Mr. Leighton.
All right, then. Mr. Leighton, is that okey-dokey with you?
Yes, I would accept.
Okay, then could we have a roll call vote?
We can. Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ms. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
So now we come to secretary. I don't know if anyone would like to offer to be secretary. Traditionally, it's the new man on the block, but it certainly doesn't have to be. And it's Laura liked doing it, so all you people got to skip that. Some people take very efficient notes all the time. They might make good secretary.
I will do the secretary job if you want me to, but I don't know how to do the social media stuff.
Fair enough. Well, maybe we can find help with that.
Okay.
That I can do.
So I can help out with that as well. I've helped out in the past.
So I think we have a solution to that.
You're a much better note taker than I am.
So therefore, I would nominate Mr. Schoenbrini as the secretary. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
And a roll call vote? Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ms. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
All right, so I think what we would do is when we get down to, do we want to make a new office being social media person? Or do we want to make like a committee? And put it with the committees?
What specifically are we doing on social media?
Basically, well, we used to do two things on social media. We used to have a Twitter account, which is still there, I'm sure. But the person who manned it hasn't been on the committee for a while, and so therefore, nothing ever Twittered after that. As you can tell, it wasn't me. And basically, it's posting on Facebook that we have a meeting. This is what the major topics are. The Facebook account is just for that purpose, not for people to chat in.
Yep, and then Laura would turn the comments off immediately.
Right, right. So
Brian, have you done that before?
Yeah, so I was initially, I started it up, and then when I was secretary, and then we had our, I think it was Vice Chair Wendy was also on it, but she was kind of just that extra set of hands. And then when Laura came on, Wendy went off, and it was just me and Laura. But yeah, it's really just posting either the minutes or the agenda or the videos, the YouTube videos too, of our minutes and any important announcements that we want to make. But I think it's important to not get opinions out there, and we shut off the comments. It's more
Well, then maybe what we should do is have Brian and Laura together, continue with that.
Okay, does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay, so do we have to vote that? That's not really an official job. But I think we're okay with the discussion. All right, we'll go on. We do need to vote to approve to continue all existing policies in effect for this ensuing year. So in other words, the vast amount of policies that the school committee oversees will remain in effect until we in effect vote to change them is what this is. So I need someone to propose that we approve that.
I move that we continue all existing policies in effect for the ensuing year. Is that do we do them separately?
No, we'd be here all till the
No, 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 I mean the part three and four.
Yeah, yeah, we would do all of those separately. Yeah, yeah. So we have a second on part two here about the existing policies. Is there discussion about existing policies? Hearing no discussion, then let's have a roll call vote, please.
We have a second for that, no? Yes, okay, thank you. Mr. Leighton? Roll call vote, Mr. Leighton? Welcome back to Mr. Leighton. Mrs. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
He's muted.
Okay, he maybe had to step away from his
Okay. So we will continue on, however, he will find his way back. Number three is approved to authorize student activity funds for the following amounts. The primary school $2,000, Turkey Hill Elementary School $2,000, Lunenburg Middle School $5,000, and Lunenburg High School $10,000. And these are the amounts that are traditionally in these accounts.
Does anybody? Move to approve or to move to authorize the student activity funds as you outlined.
And a second?
Sorry.
Okay, then a roll call vote.
Okay. Mrs. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
He's back. Okay, number four. We have to approve the waiver to allow food and beverages with lids. It's interesting the way it's written because it's really just beverages with lids, isn't it? Correct. Like, why does it say food beverages?
Cup of soup?
Well, sometimes it does get long in there, but it's hard to eat with the lid on it, so. Do we want to just leave it food beverages, or do we just want to take out the word food as long as we're here?
I think that the point, I don't think we, I don't think we believe in this.
Okay, that's fine. I don't mind. I just found it odd. So then we need a motion to approve that?
Uh, thanks for the question. Sure. Does this cover both town meetings? Because now we have two.
We use it at both town meetings. This does only say annual town meeting.
I just want to, yeah, because it said annual, and we have two now.
We could add in special town meeting, a fall town meeting.
Probably worth, there wouldn't be extra two seconds to do that.
So let's make, no, that's not a problem at all. We can make that amendment. So we will amend that to approve a waiver to allow food beverages with lids in the LMHS auditorium for both annual and special town meetings.
So moved.
Second. And then a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
All righty, so we took care of that business. Now we have appointments to existing committees. Before we go down this long list of committees, just for the public's knowledge and for, Mrs. Brzezowski hasn't walked through this before. An important part of being a member of the school committee is to be on committees. But we all have busy lives, and lives are busy at different times, hopefully, so all these committees can be taken care of. So we'll go through the list, and if it's something of interest and it's something that fits into your schedule, then that's fine. If not, we'll figure out a way to cover it. So that's about how that goes. So we'll start at the beginning. We're going to vote them all at once, though. So voting, official voting delegate to the Mass Association of School Committees, that is generally the chair, unless somebody would like to wrestle for that. I'm fine with keeping that. Legislative representative for school committee, that's generally also the chair. So I will keep that. Spokesperson. And what that means is if a member of the committee gets a comment or from a member of the public, according to our current protocols, what would happen is you would say to the person, well, you need to, suppose somebody emailed you asking about something that happened at the middle school. Then you would say, well, you need to follow the chain of command, which would be the teacher and then the administrators. And then, if you're not happy with that, you talk to the superintendent. And then you would go to the school committee. But generally, you would forward that to me, and I would get back to them. That's how we do that. That is in our protocol. So that's what that in general means. At a public meeting, if there is a question, if I cannot be at the meeting and somebody else can, then I would say, you know, this is what the school committee decision is on this particular situation. And then somebody else could carry that through. Hello, Mr. Leighton?
Do that.
I thought you might have been in the car or something.
Very cute.
Um, so that's what that means. So generally, according to our protocol, that is the chair. So I would keep that. There is a chair there. Excuse me, chairs. Yeah, there's an extra, well, either way. Um, so I would keep that. Um, we're talking meetings. You're good. I could never figure out how to be mobile and listen on the phone while I'm moving around. Um, so policy development is the next one. Laura Kelly was on that committee. Obviously, she is not there anymore. So policy development. So what that is is on occasion, we have an issue that policy needs to be looked at. For example, the transportation policy had to be looked at. In that case, as a group, we talked about what we wanted to do with it a lot. And then it went back, then it went back to policy committee. They drafted it into language and brought it back to us. We tweaked the language. It was one of those kinds of deals. But typically, what happens in policy, MASC, which is Mass Association of School Committees, will say that they have suggestions for a certain group of policies. And then the policy committee looks at that groupings. And because what they suggest may not work in actual And because what they suggest may not work in that community, but there probably is a good reason for the suggestion, so it requires some discussion. And then, once the policy committee looks at something, then they bring it back to us. And then it goes to a first read. Typically, if it's something pretty. Um, low key, we don't generally read it to everybody. It takes a long time to read all these policies, but we would have read it. And we would comment on it and it's always posted on our website so that people can comment on it. But policies require three readings and at the third reading, we read them in full. So.
And then vote on it.
And then vote on it.
You voted at the third meeting?
At the third meeting. Unless it's been thrown back for some reason, then it starts all over again. Um, so, obviously, Mrs. Kelly is no longer on this committee. And Mister Scormbrini, was, this was a committee you wanted to keep, right?
Yeah, it's been enjoyable.
I'd be okay.
You'd be okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, if you'd like to take that, that would be okay. All right, um. Next are. Administrators in advisory capacity. So what we have here is the list of. The administrators in the district, um, with the, um, to be determined. In the middle school as the principal. I'm not the middle school, Turkey Hill, sorry about that, at Turkey Hill, um. As, as we are working on appointing the principal of Turkey Hill. So, um. I am not gonna read that because it's a big jumbled mess on my iPad and nothing lines up and I'm gonna read something wrong. If somebody is looking at it in a way that it makes sense, they can read it. I can read them out. Okay, good, thank you, cuz this doesn't work.
So our, uh, principals and assistant principals, Mister Santry, Mister McGrath, Mister Maiku, Mrs. Tussignot. Mister Adams, Mrs. uh, Cutenaria and, um. Mister Palumbo for the Turkey Hill Elementary. Uh, we have our Facility Director, Mister Puceteri, um, our. Uh, Finance and HR Director, Mister Michael Cassidy, our Special, um. Services Director, Juliana Hanscom. Um, we have Mrs. Scott as our Director of Teaching and Learning. Uh, we also have, uh, Mrs. Lorenzen as our Director of Food Services. And I think that covers everybody.
Okay, so then we will continue on. Um, the sick leave bank, and that is a committee that does not meet very often, but what it does. Is, um, allows staff members to. Use additional sick days if they have an emergency which requires it. Um, sick days are donated by members of the union and they can be used. Um, with the permission of the sick, sick leave bank, which also includes union membership as well. So Laura was on that committee. Is there anyone that has an interest in being? It, it's not something that needs all of that often. Um, hopefully, hopefully people stay healthy and we don't need that.
Pretty rare occasion.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind doing that one. That one doesn't meet very often and I can be available easily, usually. So, unless somebody else wants to do it. Okay. I will do that then. Um, Superintendent of Schools, of course, is Doctor Burnham. And Executive Board Member to Keystone Collaborative would also be Doctor Burnham. Um, Keystone Collaborative is the, it used to be called Flack a million years ago. Um, it, it's special education, what do you call it, group that, um. Students from several communities, probably six or seven, probably communities. Um, send their students to this so that they get the appropriate education in a collaborative manner. Rather than if, if each school had to design curriculum for each of these kids, it would be extremely cost prohibitive. So that is what that is. Uh, Finance Committee. So. This representative is to be the liaison to the Finance Committee. Finance Committee meets on Thursday nights from. Uh, probably, well, depends on the year, but probably from at least December till. The, uh, town meeting in May, it's almost every week. You don't have to go to all those meetings. But you do have to look at the video, so you know what's going on. I would say that if you're trying to learn about how the community works, that is the place to go. Because every facet of the community at one point or another of community government. Works through the Finance Committee. So, um. A meeting sometimes along, not as long as ours, but sometimes along and, um, but. I have done it as long as I've been on this board. And I am okay if somebody else wants to do it, but if not, I will continue to do it. So. I will.
I, I think I could potentially do it, but I would definitely have to unload some other.
You'd have to unload something else.
Like you said, of like learning more about it, that would be.
But it, it is a great way and while we are saying Finance Committee, if anybody is listening, they desperately need people. So if you are interested in being a member of the Finance Committee, please contact the Town Hall.
My first thought too was Peter, but then after your discussion, I was like, no, Peter already has the background for the Finance Committee.
Right, right. That wouldn't, that wouldn't do that. Well, why don't we keep that in a bay and then if we find something else you may wanna load off. Then I may be interested in loading on, but you are, as, as Mister Scormbrini noted earlier, the busiest, busiest person any of us know. So, we'll leave it with me at the moment and then if you decide to change your mind, that's okay. Um, so the person, the Finance Committee Appointing Committee. Is, would be the same person because they know what's going on on the Finance Committee. Uh, Finance Committee members are appointed, not elected. And so the Appointing Committee is a member of the School Committee, a member of the Select Board, and the Town Moderator. So. So generally, it makes sense for that to be the same person. We'll continue. Um, Capital Planning, I was not on Capital Planning.
No.
Um, I've never been on Capital Planning and, um. No, no, I, I've had, no, I, I'm, I'm good. So, um, Mister Beardmore was on Capital Planning. Mister Beardmore, are you interested in keeping your capital planning hat?
Very interesting. Yeah, I think he's good, but I, I've known it for that, but I like having Peter on it.
And our capital planning was very successful last year, not in small amounts. It was due to, um, Mister Beardmore. So, we are happy to keep you on Capital Plan.
Thank you.
Um, Wellness Advisory, obviously wasn't Sophie because she has been gone for a while. Was that? Who was that?
I'm willing.
That was.
I volunteered to do that. They did not meet at all, so far as I know.
Well, that is an easy committee.
Yeah.
They, they're supposed to meet four times a year. I know that, um. Currently, it's Lisa Lavery, one of the nurses that, at the middle high school that was leading that and the meetings were scheduled. The very tail end of the year. Typically, they're scheduled. To be spaced out from the year.
Okay.
Um, and they occur, um, usually in the afternoon, I think around three thirty.
I mean, that's fine. If, if there's only four of them, that's fine. Maybe, I can make that work.
Okay, we can keep you there. Um. PTO Liaison, we had trouble with this.
I, I, I do that, and I enjoyed it.
And you enjoyed it?
I had no idea what was going on. It's really helpful to learn what was actually going on.
So is that something you wish to keep?
Yes, I'd do that again.
All right, well, if you wish to do it again, that would be fine.
Is that a two-member job or did you just have two names?
I think it was a backup, like that was a backup.
Yeah, it was. I didn't have a lot of time and they met on Monday nights and that was not a good night for me, so if I couldn't go. Brian could go, but if Brian's wife went, he couldn't go and so then I had to go. It was one of those tag team deals.
And it was virtual, like you thought, when it was live, I couldn't go if that was how much he did.
So, so it became a challenge, so Scormbrini, that's fine. Um, PacCell Liaison, Laura, this might be something that might be good for you to do. This is, um. Includes special education, includes ELL, includes, um. Parents of kids that have five oh fours and, and they have been very. This year, they've worked very hard to try and get more parents involved.
That's not a conflict of interest. My son's on a night.
Oh, no, that's not a conflict of interest at all. That would be good.
Uh, how often do they meet and when?
Four times a year.
Yeah, so.
I'll do it.
They usually do it on like a Google Meet too, so it's nice that you don't have to.
So you don't have to be there?
Yeah, a hundred percent, I'll do that.
So I think.
I would love to.
Okay, good. We'll do that.
Yeah, I think the last one I had in my calendar was January tenth at six P M, which is the evening, Zoom or Google Meet.
They, they're very rare, but it's very informative.
Yeah, I, yeah, cuz that's, I'm trying to learn as much as I can about that.
Well, that's a good place to learn.
Okay, yeah, it's not a conflict.
No, that's fine. Um, next, the School Council Representatives. Each school has a school council. And each school council generally has one member of the school committee, um, available. And once again, this is availability, because the high school and middle school councils are generally gonna meet around three in the afternoon. And the Turkey Hill and Primary School generally around four in the afternoon. So.
How often?
Um, once a month. If that's something that can fit into your life, last year I was not assigned one. Because other people could fit them in and that was okay with me, but I generally can.
I, I had a hard time making the, the middle school one. Um, they were really accommodating, but unfortunately. Everybody seems to have an emergency at two thirty.
Was that one in person or was that one?
It, it was originally in person, but then, uh, uh, Mister Santry had them send me invitations and that I could join. But it, it just never ended up working. I made like three and that was not great.
Turkey Hill was Zoom, um, but. Depending on the new principal, we'll see how that.
Yeah, see how that works. So, um, I've got kids at Turkey Hill and the primary, well, I would, uh, so I don't mind taking. But one or both of those.
Okay, so, um, Brian, you have primary.
I have, uh, so me and Laura switched off, like we were that and then we switched. Recently, I was, I, this past year I was Turkey Hill and she was primary, but it doesn't matter to me too cuz I have, I have kids in primary and Turkey, so. Either one's fine.
So Brian would take one, you would take the other, which would be your.
Oh, it doesn't. Doesn't matter.
Well, you just have to fight it out. One of you has to make a decision.
Oh, can I take Turkey Hill just cuz it doesn't mean the principal? I think that would be interesting.
That would be good.
Is that okay?
Sounds good.
That would be fine and Brian will stay with the primary school. Um, Mister Beardmore. The high school, are you gonna stay there?
Happy to continue serving any of the best.
All right, well, why don't you stay at the high school and Mister Scormbrini, I will pick up your middle school.
Thank you.
That two thirty in the afternoon is not good for you, so I, I can do that. Middle school. Okay. Um, the municipal, oh, I skipped a whole bunch, sorry. Um, Athletic Advisory Committee.
I've enjoyed that, we don't meet too often, um.
That's something that fits into your life.
I like it with this point.
If you were to pick up something else when you wanted to, well, that would be a position I would. Interested.
Okay, that could work, huh?
That would, okay, so if Peter takes the Athletic Advisory Committee and then Brian, you can breathe a little.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna step on your toes.
No, no.
We haven't called Finance Committee yet, so. We're still horse trading.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there's still some horse trading going on. Okay, um, the Lifelong Learning Adviser, Peter, that's you. Did that meet me?
I don't know that.
What, what is the?
We should, we meet if we need to, um, make any adjustments to what we're doing with the lifelong learning program. Um, we did not make any adjustments this year, it was the same programs running. Um, this one may actually be a good one. Uh, for a while, because it doesn't meet very often and you can learn about the, we could have a meeting so you can learn about the program.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, by you, Peter?
Totally okay, by me. It's, it's not, it would not be considered a loss because it was never really there.
All right, well, there you go. That takes care of it.
I may, I may come this to learn.
All right, um, Municipal Building Design Committee, now that is a time eater.
Yeah, so like, yeah, I'd love to unload it, but I feel like I'm so close to the end, I'm hoping it's the end.
Oh, I hope it's the end too.
Too, so.
Um, that is something I wouldn't mind switching to Fin Palm. But if you wish to see it through to the end.
I don't need to, no, at the same time, like, it wouldn't be bad, uh.
Can you just stay town? I think it's important to try to facilitate as much.
Okay.
I would be concerned.
Just switch.
Uh, you know, and I know that guys sort of, I can be very grateful, you know, it's part of the problem that. And, I think we. I think it's good stewardship on our part to make some consistency. And, and it's a huge, you know.
It is a huge commitment, okay?
And it will be more of a commitment to the first town.
Yes, the boss.
We must have finished line.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we hope it's closer. Um, well, let me, let me say this then.
I could keep it till, uh, fall time meeting.
If, if there's, if there's anything I can do, like if you can't make a meeting, I don't mind jumping in.
Yeah.
So that there was somebody there, so they just don't say.
Yeah, they typically meet on Mondays.
Yeah, okay. And then the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Is new.
Is new. It is a new deal and, um, they want a member from each of. The committees to sit on that so that. They're making a master plan.
For what? I don't even know what it means.
Every. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
I think it's every ten years, the town has to come up with a master plan. For what we envision in the next coming years.
It, it helps.
Okay.
Is, is it more driven, driven by like planning?
It is driven.
By the planning.
It's, the, the Planning Board is responsible for it by statute and they are. Administering the Steering Committee. So, for example, they determined that the makeup of the committee would include a school committee member. And that, that sort of thing. So the, the, the Planning Board is ultimately responding. Um, I, I think it's important and it, it actually came up in their meeting on Monday. I, I called. Matt Allison a week or two ago cuz they were debating whether there should be a school committee member on it. And my argument was, you know. Matt Allison was often the first one to say that we need up more than half of the budget. And on an eleven plus member committee, I think that there should be school representation. Um, you know, particularly, this is a, this is a committee that is going to be looking at. For example, demographic information, looking at the, the mix of the town and what we want it to be in terms of a business and residential mix and. Those kinds of topics and, and I think all of that is going to have long-term repercussions on our operations as well as funding, so. Um, the, the problem is, I don't think that there's any way to know what the actual commitment. In off tempos going to be of this committee. It's a, it's a bit of a wild call.
I would think it has potential to be as time-consuming. As the Capital Plan Committee and the Municipal Building Committee, I mean, it does have that potential.
Yeah, I mean.
Depending on who's the chair of this then.
I don't know. It, it will be, I'm relatively sure it'll be a many word number, but I don't know. Um, and I, there, it could already be figured out, I just don't have the information.
Yeah.
Um, the subtle difference here, at least with respect to the Capital Planning Committee is, like Finance Committee. It's seasonal.
Seasonal.
So, Capital Plan Committee is kinda crazy in November and December in particular. And, you know, the, the couple of months leading up to that and then it kind of stops. Uh, whereas this will probably take a couple of years to see the progression.
So is there anyone within? So is there anyone within interest of jumping in on this?
I am interested in it, but I'm not prepared or enough to do it. No, I know. Um, so like. I don't think right now is a good time.
I'm not ready to do that.
But um if someone else wants to do it and then later decides it's too much, you wouldn't be stuck with it forever.
Wow.
How long how long are they planning to meet too?
Maybe we, maybe we take.
You wanna table this one and get more information?
And talk to Mr. Allison and maybe Mr. Bernie. Get their sense for what about the workload and then bring that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be good to know when they're starting and ending cuz I feel like there, it should be a process.
There should be, yeah, you would think. You would think, um. Yeah, so. Let's find that out. Cuz that if the time commitment is relatively short. I wouldn't mind doing something like that if somebody else picked up the FinPom. I could keep the nominating committee cuz I know how that works and I know what is necessary for somebody to be on that committee, but um.
Often this one is believing.
Um, twice a month typically unless it's between like March.
February, March.
February and March is every week, if not twice a week.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, it's nuts. But but see, the thing is, once you get to that time of the year, what they're doing is departmental meetings. So it's it's fascinating for somebody that doesn't know what a certain group does and and what the town's monetary commitment to them are. And like if you listen to um Council on Aging and and we listen to um the discussion about they get funds from other places and they, you know, that whole thing, but it's nothing that you really have to report on cuz there's nothing to do with us.
Do you need to attend every one of their meetings?
I watch every one of those meetings. Yeah, that it's a lot of time. That's why I don't mind giving it away at this point. I I know what all these committees do, but I it's okay. I I'll keep it. But why don't I I'll keep it for now and let's find out about the the planning master plan group a little bit more.
I think it, going back to what Peter said, if Peter took the athletic advisor, that leaves up a little bit of time. I I have interest in FinPom, but I think I'm not gonna be able to make all the meetings, but I could definitely watch the YouTube, so I think probably makes sense.
So you could do that.
And then you could still do the FinPom appointment here too.
Yeah, you could do that. All right, so we'll let you have some FinPom. I will keep the nominating committee cuz I've been doing that forever. And then um with the thought that probably I would do this master plan steering committee if it worked, the timing makes sense and, you know.
It's gonna be a big committee and they're looking at a number of at-large community members. Given that circumstance, I would imagine it's gonna be even again.
Yeah, yeah.
And then when you consider all the committees that are represented, they won't be able to find a night.
They can't find them.
You know, so it's gonna be like, you know, you can just kinda see how that's gonna progress, so that'll be.
So, all right, well, we'll we'll talk before we make a definite decision on the master plan. We'll talk to um to Matt Allison and to Adam and see what what that looks like. And then um Brian, if you wanna do the FinPom, you can do the FinPom. And um if you find you get too far behind or something not catching, I can, I can YouTube one or two. Um, and I'll stick with the pointing community. All right, are we happy with that? Then we need, did we get to the bottom?
We did.
We did. All right, so then we need a motion to approve. Oh.
Can I?
You can.
I think we just put you down as master plan steering committee and then we can make adjustments if we could get this not fitting your schedule and not what you thought it was.
Okay.
I feel like you're you're already kind of one foot in the door.
All right, well, then maybe, yeah, well, then we wouldn't have.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine with me. Okay. So then we need to have someone um make a motion to approve what we just did.
I'll make a motion to approve the subcommittee appointments, just the steps.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Then that job is done. Let's hope we don't have to do.
Everybody stay quiet.
Oh, my goodness, that was that was challenging. All right, so next we have initial approval of the Costa Rica trip. And do we have somebody on Zoom to talk about?
We do. This is a teacher from um the middle high school, um Ms. Heidi Hewitt. She's a teacher in the foreign language department.
Okay.
So Heidi, I'll turn it over to you to um give an overview of of this trip to the school committee.
Thank you. So, yeah, um, I am a Spanish teacher over at the middle high school proposing an April twenty twenty four trip uh to Costa Rica, a country that I actually first traveled to as a high school student. Um, and would love to come full circle and offer it again to our Lunenburg students. I've been to this country about four times now and taken my own children. Um, it's a pretty great place, lots to offer. It's very safe. The dates would be April eleventh through April eighteenth of twenty twenty four. Um, the cost or the company is walking tree travel. And the cost uh would be twenty six ninety plus the flight costs, which is estimated to be about seven or eight hundred. Um, and TBD once that flight is booked. And I think that's all the information I have to start. Um, if you guys have any questions.
Like to be a partner with Costa Rica.
Come on in.
Does anybody have any questions just for the public's knowledge? We have a very outlined itinerary, so we're not just going on um the brief conversation here. We have an itinerary that includes all kinds of it looks like lovely stuff going on here. Um, uh, natural history of bats. We have um some volcano stuff. We have hot springs, uh, we have a waterfall, we have chocolate coffee sugarcane tour. Um. Crocodiles and um a national park with monkeys. I it it does sound lovely. Any comments from the committee?
Uh, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I have a comment. Um. Who are the students that are going that are eligible to go on this trip?
So any student from grades nine through twelve.
So this does not require that they are taking Spanish or have taken Spanish or anything like that.
No, it does not.
Um, so I just wanna make a general comment here. And it's timely because we had a group of students leave this morning for Washington. Um, and it was, I think, a large portion, majority portion of the eighth grade class. And it was a substantial investment on the part of the parents for that trip to occur. Um, like a lot of money, more money than has ever been spent on a Washington DC trip. Um, and you know, I I'm a big believer in current travel. I went on a Lindbergh school trip as a couple of overseas or one overseas trip and a Canadian trip with Mrs. Arshinbo's husband when I was a senior in high school.
There you go.
Um, I did.
That's amazing.
Um. But I I'm and and the the overseas trip that I did, I was able to pay for out of my savings account from part-time jobs as a junior in high school because it paled in comparison to the price associated with these trips. And um, you know, we talk about equity a lot at this table and the equity chimes are ringing in my ears right now. And and I don't want an equity discussion to be limiting of the opportunities that we afford to our students. But I I'm conflicted by by these kinds of proposals. I'm not gonna vote against this. Um, but I I wanna put out a cautionary tone here. Um. Because I I you know, just just like I raised with the issues around around climate in the school in in the schools a couple of months ago. This is inevitably gonna leave kids out of, you know, social cohorts or just who are really interested. We just can't do it because this is totally cost prohibitive. Um, not only to the students, but to the families. And and that will be a continuing theme that I brought up with the superintendent and the chair this morning. Um, we pull a lot of money as parents out of our lawless degree in public education. And um, I don't know, I I applaud, I applaud you for bringing it forward. I think you're doing, nobody's, nobody's wrong here. Um, but it but it's troubling nevertheless.
Good point. So I have a question. Um, Ms. Hewitt. Uh, does this company at all uh offer any scholarship? Um. Opportunity. I I believe we had some scholarship opportunity with the company that uh we worked with for the Washington DC trip.
So I don't know the answer to that question. I know that they offer a lot of fundraising opportunities. I don't know about scholarships. I could certainly ask them. Um, they're pretty grassroots company that it's kind of they're a very small company and they really believe in that that sort of thing, so I will I'll get an answer on that from them.
Thank you.
I'm Mr. Lightman.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hewitt. I did see that there is uh monthly payment plans, interest fee available. Is there any fundraising opportunities that are gonna be available for the students?
Yeah, so the company does have some listed on their website that we can partake in. We can also do our own. It really depends on the group of kids we get and the motivations there for that group and kind of what is available to us, but that's certainly something that we're gonna talk about.
Thank you.
Mr. Scormbrini.
I I just wanna follow up on something Peter said. I I think uh from when we heard a couple, maybe it was more than a year ago about the the cruise from Greece to Italy. And I thought that would have been a really foundational experience for a high school student. Is there any way that we as a school committee could work on making sure that kids that wanna go can go and then try to figure out? Now, I don't know how to make the money work. I I obviously, I think this is a great idea. I support it. I would vote for it. I just think that, you know, the more kids that could go, the better. And like for the Washington DC trip, that for me, I remember that trip, but I didn't even I grew up and I look at Catholic school. It was like the only thing that we did with non-Catholic school kids and it was a big deal. I don't I don't think I would be a lawyer if I didn't go on that trip. And we had somebody show us, you know, the Declaration of Independence. It would make a difference. And sadly, I can, that steps along the memorial. And I I just think that these trips are such good experiences that maybe we should try to think of a way to help everybody who wants to go go. And I know that that's like a a big budget issue, a big money issue, but if we can start heading in that direction, it's it's part of an education. And if we can give it to them, I think we should try to figure out a way to make that happen.
Uh, Mrs. Wasowski.
Um, so one of my questions is um it's open to grades nine through twelve, so maybe every three or four years we could focus on, cuz these trips look great. They look like amazing opportunities. We could focus on maybe more budget trips where the point of, not the point of the trip, but one of the focuses of the trip is to keep the price point as low as possible. Maybe they go on a bus trip to Quebec or I'm not sure cuz um they they do something lower price so that at least once in their high school careers, the kids can get one trip that is maybe more within reach that in parents would know that there's going to be one trip um that they wouldn't have to shell out quite as much for. So maybe we could make that a little bit of a priority. It doesn't have to be every time. I mean, cuz this trip looks amazing. Um, and I had another question, which is there an upper limit on size and how many kids in general go on these trips?
I think it varies. Um, the last trip was exponentially more students just because that was post COVID and there were thirty five students. But pre-COVID trips struggled to get off the ground cuz there were, you know, fewer than six, I believe. So we'll see, it's kind of, we see what we get and go from there. Um, we certainly don't wanna say no to any students. But we also don't wanna take, you know, too many for it to be unsafe, so to be determined on the group sides.
Okay, do you have a cutoff or?
I'm hoping to get at least twenty four. Um, there's no cutoff right now. We might, we might stop at twenty four, see what we have, talk to the company. Um, they don't have a cutoff that I know of, so it might be where we need to split into two groups if it gets larger than that. Um. But my, the number I have in mind would ideally be about twenty four, allow for adults to chaperone. Um, so that's kind of the target for now and we'll kind of see what what interest we get.
Thank you. Hey, any other questions? Mr. Lightman.
Uh, thank you again, Ms. Ms. Hewitt. Uh, have you considered uh reaching out to the PTO for potential scholarships for the students?
It's a great idea. I had not. But I will do that. Um, I love the idea of scholarships and making this available. Um, already in the pre-conversation with the students, it's I have a job, I make this much money and trying to make it feasible is tricky. So any any scholars we could get, I'm certainly willing to ask for and get as much as we can.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if there's no further discussion, then we need a motion to for initial approval for this trip.
I'll make a motion for initial approval with the Costa Rica.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I think we should be all set, but I I do think the conversation was was really good about trying to figure out what to do. I was one of those kids who never got to go on those trips. Um. Because it just, forget it. There was no way. So um, yeah, I I think that's a good conversation to put in the back of our heads here. All right, moving on. Um, donations.
You have two donations before you this evening. Uh, one uh is from the PTO in the amount of uh two, two thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, and from um box tops in the amount of sixty dollars and eighty cents totaling two thousand four hundred nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. And this would be deposited into the primary student activities account for the purpose of upcoming field trips and presentations. And the second is a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from Affordable Interior Systems, Inc. out of Lemonster. Uh, this money was donated to um uh cover cost for the ACE program students to take a trip to Canobie. Um, this is a company that that's uh two of our ACE program students have been working with um volunteering some time. Um, and there's a possibility that upon exit from the program, one of these students may actually uh find themselves employed with this company. Um, so we thought this was a really amazing gesture on the part of of this this company.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you. Um. Okay, well, that's terrific. Then do we have a motion to approve these um donations for our students?
Make a motion to approve the donations, accept the donations with gratitude.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we'll send something to, yes, this company. Excellent. Not that we don't appreciate the PTO as well, but that's a little unusual circumstance. that's all unusual circumstance. So that completes new business, old business, the final approval for the Galapagos trip.
So we have, uh, Mrs. Garen with us this evening, so I'll turn it over to her to give you a summary of where we're at. Hello, Mrs. Garen.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me. Um, yes, we're on our, I think, our third attempt of trying to get this trip to get out of the United States. And I met with the parents tonight and the travelers tonight, uh, just before this meeting and everyone's definitely excited to go and, uh, feeling very prepared because like we've already been through the paperwork and we actually have a little bit left this year between, you know, not needing the COVID test and bringing masks and all that sort of stuff. So yes, we're, we're in the official, it's, it's getting exciting because we're down to a month officially tomorrow.
Okay, anyone have any questions? This, um, obviously, uh, for Laura's benefit, this has been mixed up with the COVID years and has been, had very difficult time taking place. So we are glad that you finally are able to do so. Um, it is a small amount of students. It was significantly more when they started. But some of those have graduated and
Yeah, this was a twenty twenty trip, right?
This was a tale of a long time. Is what this was.
Yeah. And last year we were close. Last year we were twenty five hours from takeoff when they canceled it. So we're not out of the woods yet, but
it's looking better though.
Yes, for that too.
Well, congratulations, Mrs. Sabatini, on seeing this thing through. Um, I know this is something that you put an enormous amount of blood, sweat and tears into and glad it's finally happening. Um, just to further illustrate however, the point that I made a little bit earlier, for the public's benefit, we have a, a document in front of us. Um, so the, the trip that we just gave initial approval to with travel and the, the cost of the trip, the airline and the trip is about a thirty five hundred dollar investment. This is a forty nine hundred dollar investment. Now, it's a fabulous nine day trip to the Galapagos. It's in my opinion, a pretty good value.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but nevertheless, it is, uh, a, a large amount of money as well. So just, just to kind of show this is more common than, and travel is very expensive.
It is. It's, it's gotten much more expensive. Um, perhaps someone who likes to write notes down all the time might write down that, um, when we talk about school committee goals in the fall, perhaps a goal might be how do we rationalize the high cost of these trips? With the equity issue, uh, do we attempt to do as Laura suggested, to try and find something more reasonable once in a while that kids can hang their hat on and, or do we attempt to raise vast amounts of money or how, how do we do this going forward in a more equitable way? Not that, I'm sure Mrs. Garen has done what she can to help them out. I mean,
She had her hand up.
Yes, I'm sorry. I can't see the zooms.
That's okay. I just wanted to say when we first started this trip, it was probably thirty eight, thirty nine hundred dollars. And I, I, the COVID nightmare, everything just kept getting worse and worse. I mean, even last year had gone up significantly and it did go up again this year. So um, I was trying to get the company to honor our original prices. Um, but they, I think they've had a lot of loss in the last couple of years. So um, I do know what, what I've kind of pushed for. So Mrs. Sabatini and I had sort of earned the two spots for us to go because we had those thirteen kids. And I know last year, all of a sudden there was a bill out there for the chaperone to pay part of it. And I was like, listen, I'm on like nineteen kids at this point that I've gotten to go on this trip. So we're not paying for this and they weren't going to charge us last year. And even though we have a smaller group going this year, like I said, you know, we're, we're well over the, earned the two chaperones that we have to go for this trip. And fortunately, the company is honoring that for us too. So.
That's good. That speaks well for them.
Yes.
So we need to have a motion for final approval with, uh, thirty days or so to go for the Galapagos trip.
I'll make a motion to approve the Galapagos trip.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Have a wonderful time, we hope.
Thank you. Good night. Thanks.
Good night now. Um, next we have the personnel report.
So we'll turn it over to Mr. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. My Cassidy, Business Manager and HR Director in front of the school committee tonight is a report of progress. It is the Personnel Report. This is a, an update on our recent, uh, retirements, resignations and new hires. Uh, a couple of items I want to bring to the committee's attention. Um, you, you're well aware of it, but it's, it's official on, on our personnel report. Heidi Champagne is retiring on June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-three. Our, uh, on another note, our, our next school committee meeting will be the retirement, uh, retiree reception. At this point there, we have two teachers and Miss Champagne. Uh, no, no paraprofessionals at this, at this time. We've had a number of resignations, uh, since the last report. Um, and we're trying to fill those positions as quickly as possible. Uh, some good news is we're starting to, uh, fill some positions for next, for the beginning of next school year. We fired two, uh, T, uh, two teachers and a school psychologist at, at the primary school. So our principals are, are very active going through the open, open applications. Um, and, uh, in, interviewing as quickly as possible. Over the last, uh, few school committees, the, uh, the superintendent has mentioned that the, uh, uh, administration is being more active in our recruitment fears. Just want to sumar- summarize our our recruitment fear season. So on, um, April twelfth, uh, we participated in Mel, Mass Hire. It was a DSE virtual job fair. Um, somewhat new, uh, process. Uh, can't determine whether or not it was successful, but I think it's going to grow in popularity over the years. On, um, April twentieth, we participated in the Massachusetts Educational uh, Recruitment Consortium at Boston University. It's the Merck Recruitment Fair. Those, uh, I'll refer to it moving forward. Uh, the, the Merck Recruitment Fair has been around for years and years and years. Um, it's the first time, uh, I'm aware that Lunenburg has participated. We were a small fish on a big point. It's, yeah, it, it, so there, there are recruiters there nationwide.
Wow.
Um, so it's just good to, to participate. Uh, uh, we did have a number of, uh, uh, students come and visit our tables. So we did get to meet, uh, uh, some people. And then on May eleventh, uh, we participated in the Ashburn, or excuse me. Uh, there was really no official name, but it was a recruitment fear, uh, sponsored by the Ashburnham Westminster Regional School District. It was at Oakmont High School. Uh, my opinion, it was most, the most successful of the three. It had all local applicants. Um, uh, variety from teachers to paraprofessionals to administrators. Uh, all knew where Lunenburg were, uh, was located. We had that, we had a little trouble, yeah, down in Boston. Where's, um, uh, where's Lunenburg? But we learned from that. So, uh, as far as recruiting, we, we, we have to demonstrate where we are. Obviously, we're next to Fitchburg, but, uh, just kind of jump out a bit a, as we recruit. Um, so we're, uh, so to speak, in, in the recruitment game moving forward.
Great. Hope some of that turns successful.
Yeah. Uh, we are monitoring the people that we did contact and making sure that they, uh, apply for open positions. Um, some of them were, were not certified, so we, we're trying to recruit those for long-term subpositions or even paraprofessionals.
Sure. Thank you. Any, yes, sorry.
That's all right.
Um, does Mass Hire, the DSE, does that cost us money? Do we have to pay to?
Uh, the, uh, the Mass Hire, uh, virtual job fair was a free, uh, drop fair.
Wonder.
And, uh, the Ashburnham Westminster Regional School District was a free, um, um, job here. The Merck was, uh, approximately five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Beadmore?
Um, I'm going to play my new guy card one last swear. Um, so this is the first time that I've seen, you know, a, a personnel report from this time of the year. And I was a little alarmed by the number of resignations on here. Um, we've got eight pairs, two LPNs in particular, but um, this seems like a lot. Um, are we doing, I was going to be aware of any you know, issues that might be affecting our retention, um, those kinds of things.
Again, I, I'm looking at the list that you are. Um, you know, um, I can, I, uh, there's a number of employees here that, um, ended their career here due to maternity leave. So just, um, um, just kind of calling it there. Um, one is going into, um, a, an early childhood, uh, uh, center. Um, the LPNs, uh, th- those positions are going away in the grant. So I think instead of waiting for termination or is it, they're actively seeking out other positions.
Yep.
Um, they, it, it, the, the last two, um, they've got jobs for next school year. One is certified, a paraprofessional that's getting a science, uh, position in another district. Um, the, well, I mentioned, uh, I mentioned the other one about a maternity leave.
Okay. Uh, so suffice to say, you don't perceive that we have any systematic issues that will be addressed here.
I, I don't feel that way. I, I, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's typical turnover. Um, we're prepared. We're, we're filling, um, some of the positions, uh, on the next page, we are filling some of those positions. It's part of the strategy, um, and, and I think, um, this, this was a, uh, an enlightenment for you, Mr. Beadmore. Remember we shift Paris from, from, from school to school a, as kids move up, our FTEs move up. So there, there, there's a lot of movement right now. Uh, we, we are hiring a lot of day-to-day subs to fill those positions. The, the, the reshuffling is being worked on right now. So, uh, we'll be able to, uh, recruit for specific positions when we know. Um, uh, when we, we have those positions are open. Right now, if anyone is listening to this, we do have a standard open uh, application for Paris at every single school level. At this point, we are interviewing. Uh, but as soon as we know the exact number of FTEs, we'll start, um, doing appointment letters and offers out to those individuals.
I can.
Additionally, just as a, another piece of information, um, over the course of the last four or five years, um, it's been in a deliberate strategy uh, amongst the principals to, uh, hire into para physicians, certified teachers who didn't land a teaching job out of school. It gets them into a school setting, gives them experience. So we, we do have a handful of our paraprofessionals who are licensed as teachers. So when opportunities present themselves for them to pursue a teaching job, they do. Do they generally leave to take a teaching position here or will they weave both out of district? Both.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Cassidy? And I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, school calendar amendment.
So someone, um, very astute at central office, Mr. Cassidy,
Mm-hmm.
in mapping out his timelines for, uh, important dates relative to, uh, the HR department. Um, actually picked up the fact that the day count was off and, um, as it turns out, uh, we are able to move the last day of school a day ahead of what we thought it would be. I'm sure that's not going to break anyone's heart. Um, so that, that change was made. Um, you'll note that the calendar still marks Juneteenth as a holiday. Should we exceed five snow days, um, we would not be in attendance on the nineteenth. We, we would be making up days, uh, beyond there. Um, additionally, I want to make sure that this is clear as well. So some language, uh, in the yellow there was, um, changed, uh, uh, language relative to the graduation, uh, at the high school level has also changed. Um, we always schedule our, um, graduation to occur on the first Saturday in June. Most of the time, that's not an issue. However, it's important to note that, um, by statute, we we must ensure that the last day of school for seniors does not exceed twelve days from the last day of school for everyone else in the district. And there is a possibility with a certain number of snow days that we may have to move graduation to the second Saturday in order to get the days in that are required for the senior class. Um, so it's just making parents aware, um, that, that first Saturday date is not a hundred percent set in stone. And I know that the kids, um, generally speaking, uh, uh, lobby me on a regular basis through the winter months to call a snow day because they don't have to make them up. They, they actually do. So, um, I, again, just to mark it on the calendar so that parents are well aware that if, if we do have too many snow days, there is a possibility that the graduation would have to be moved to the second Sabbath. But we're hoping for a very mild winter so that we don't have that issue.
Sounds good to me for a lot of reasons. Um, any other questions on the calendar? I, I find it's amazing because I looked at this, we all looked at this and we still get it counted wrong. It is the hardest thing to do. It is. It, it shouldn't be, but it is.
You would not believe how many eyes have been on the calendar before it comes to committee.
Like that's, you saved us so much trouble catching that. Good job.
Kids are going to celebrate Michael Cassidy Day.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the amended school calendar?
Motion to approve the amended school calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now the extended day and early learning center handbook and registration amendment.
So we wanted to bring this back before you, um, because in conversation, um, with Mrs. Gillette, uh, looking at data, this was particularly relative to the last day of school because it is a half day.
Mm-hmm.
They've looked at attendance on those half days and the attendance on that very last day of school is, is relatively low. Um, and you know that this program extended day is, uh, self-sustaining. Um, so when we see that attendance is very low, um, we would make a recommendation not to run the program on that day. Uh, additionally, uh, what they saw on the Friday before the April vacation week, because it was a half day for professional development for teachers that day. So the kids were dismissed early. Again, attendance heading into a vacation week with an early release, um, attendance was very low. So the modification coming back is just notation in the handbook that, um, if the last day of school is a half day, uh, the program will not run. Um, we also, in the cover letter, um, that families get, we actually list out all of the days um, that would be impacted, programs close or as an example, on those early release half days, um, the program would run in the morning. Kids would be dropped off there and then brought to school as typical. It's just the afternoon where we see the attendance issue. Um, a, a challenge in breaking even for the day. A a challenge in breaking even for the day.
Mr. Beadmore?
Refresh my refresh my memory here, I. I recall a time where I knew this inside out and backwards and. It's drained out of my brain um. Families pay. Full rate. Whether they use it or not. If they're. If they're in uh, if they're in the program.
But not for the days that we close.
I understand that, but on a five-day week. They use for because dad comes home early from work. And. They're paying for five, five days.
Yep.
Correct. Um, so I. I certainly see the benefit to the families. Who are not using it on that half day on that Friday. Because it's a savings for a service that they are not using, so I I understand that. The purpose, though, of extended day is to offer a service to families that do not have other options, they have working parents. I I'm a little concerned that we're missing the. The lowest common denominators here. Um, and I I just worry that. You know, once again, we're potentially putting an undue burden. On families that. May not have the means because perhaps they're hourly employees or they not, they don't have the work flexibility that I have where. I come in at nine thirty and meet with you in the morning. That. I don't know, I'm I'm just, my logic on this is I'm I'm kind of uneasy and I'm not close to it, obviously, but I'm a little bit uneasy with it. Um, my other question is. Has this been included to families and have there been anything back?
So uh, my understanding is that Mrs. Gillette has already notified families that they would be not looking not to run. The last day of school this year. Um, and to my understanding, most of the parents have expressed that they understand the nature of that decision. I have not. Had any parent outreach um, and Mrs. Gillette has not conveyed. Um, any problems uh coming from the parents relative to that. Um, relative to your comments as this is a. A needed service. This, um, again. If it's a priority to keep the program open regardless of the number of children who attend. So in other words, I'm saying that we're not running it on a given day because the attendance is so low. Um, we would have to reassess and likely rates would have to be. Increased because this program is self-sustaining, so we we. We need to be making decisions for, you know, for that, so i- if it's a priority. To make sure that it's open regardless. We'd have to reassess um, the financial commitment. That parents would make to to be part of the program.
With all due respect, I think you're mixing issues here, um. And I I don't want to cite the actual numbers because I don't know. But let's say it's ten dollars a day for five days and it's fifty dollars for the week. And if you're not there on Friday or we cancel on Friday because it's the last day of school or it's a half day or whatever, and it's forty dollars. It's self-sustaining, if it's forty dollars for the week, it's self-sustaining, if it's fifty dollars for the week, the 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 difference is. Are we operating four days or five? In my mind, this isn't. This is, this is not a. Top-line sustainability of the program question. This is a, what is the? What is the best? What is the best way of running the program? To to deliver on the mission. Um, and and. We went through a change here four or five years ago when I was close to it. And I lobbied against the decision to go to this, what I called at the time a draconian vote where we were. Applying a five-days-a-week. You know, system to everybody, and it we actually got here in a couple of stages, it wasn't directly to that. Um, but it was a pay-as-you-go program previously, it no longer is.
It is, it is still a pay-as-you-go, it's not a pay-as-you-drop-in.
Okay.
Parents are making a commitment to a schedule so that we can staff it.
This is, we're making a commitment and we're sticking to the commitment. You you're absolutely right, it was a drop-in model versus a all-in model, right? Um, and. I I just feel like. If we're all in, we're all in, like, we're, you know, families are, if they're going to depend on this and they're going to commit to an employer that they're going to be there from nine to five. We ought to be thinking about reducing the negative impact on those parents. Um, not not increasing or making excuses to have the negative impact on. And this program is already fully committed, I believe, for next year, at least in the afternoons. So, and that's what we're effectively talking about here, so I. I don't know, I I I'm not convinced, I had it, and I, the other members may think differently than I do, but I'm.
So so the difference is when we are closed and the parents are paying for four days. We are not paying for the hourly staff on the day that we're closed.
Closed, we're not talking about when.
So I I don't need money coming in to pay staff.
I get, I get what he's saying, but I think. I think I'm hearing something that I didn't realize. If I only need the service Tuesdays and Thursdays after school, do I have to pay for the whole week?
No, you register for Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Just register for those two days. That wasn't what I thought I heard.
That wasn't my understanding, so that.
Yeah, it's just that the Tuesday and Thursday, I get his point.
It doesn't really, it doesn't change my.
If, no, it doesn't change your point, that if the parents. Are paying forty dollars instead of fifty dollars. If they paid, if everybody had to pay the fifty dollars whether you needed it or not. Then that day is covered financially.
So you would want us to charge for the days that we would not open?
No, no, not at all, we, he, he's asking you to be open on that day.
Right.
So why are you not, the question that I think I'm hearing, so I'm trying to be the.
You're doing a good job.
I think I'm hearing, um, the question is. If. The parents would be paying for that day anyways. Why would you close? Because everybody had to pay for that day anyhow. And it's a low attendance day, but that's your choice to take your kid out. Right, that's the question.
Perhaps a different way of putting it is, we were asking for a year-long commitment for whatever, it's four days, five days, three days, whatever it is. And if your day is a Friday and you're committed to that day. You choose to take your kid out early, you're still committed to that number. And in my mind, we should be, extended day should be open on the day school is open. Uh, in in my mind, that's just. Kind of weird, that's sort of a minimum level of service, and I think talking ourselves out of that is a slippery slope. And and I. You know, ma- maybe we need a little bit more detail here or talk it through or something, but I just don't feel comfortable with. With. Chopping away at. Open hours for extended day.
Okay, if we can withdraw it.
Well, I wouldn't say withdraw it, it's maybe we talk it out or.
What are we talking about percentage-wise? As far as how many, um, I want to say that the number that uh we had last year. Uh, was fewer than fourteen out of the seventy-five spots on the last day, half-day of school. And I believe it was fewer than that on the Friday half-day heading into April break. And parents didn't complain about the last day of school this year. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any issue.
I'm just wondering if it's also a cost savings for the program, like, it's a, it's a low-attendance day, so they can lower the amount of staff that they have, they can have a. An idea of how many students, if they can follow the data, okay, maybe we just need two staff members or three staff members. Could be a cost savings, awesome.
We'd have to ask the parents to make the commitment that they'd be dropping their kids off.
You'd have to, you would have to know how many people are going to show up that day. That would be true. If you were going to do a that one.
I I wouldn't ask you to withdraw it, Dr. Burnham. I think what I'm saying is I need. Personally, I would feel more comfortable maybe tabling this to another meeting or. You know, maybe looking at broader communication and soliciting feedback, I just, I don't feel comfortable.
I would make a motion that we table it for next meeting, get some feedback from. Parties involved, even if it's Patty too.
Do we accept?
Second.
Um, my only concern would be, don't forget about the calendar. But this has to be done, it would have to be the next meeting. Because they have to know what they're doing the day before the last day of school. And that's swiftly approaching, that is the vision.
Oh, my read on this was this is twenty-three, twenty-four.
No, but I think she said that they would, they wanted to do it this year.
Fairly. Yes, but but. The change for the handbook would be for next year to add that date to the list so that parents know right upfront which dates they would have to work around.
So this communication of this, so it's not a matter of. We have to hurry up this year.
Correct.
Okay, that's different. Then, um, so then all those in favor of tabling it for more information? Aye, I'm okay with that. Okay. Um. Now. The um, Turkey Hill Facility Improvement Plan. Dr. Burnham, my trust are going to give us a little history here.
So I'll invite uh Mister Cassidy and uh Mister Pusiteri to join me on this one. So this evening, we've compiled a. A summary of um. All of the projects that uh we see on the horizon. For the Turkey Hill Elementary School. Mister Beadmore had indicated that he. Wanted to pursue the development of a, I think initially he he referred to it as the Get Well Plan for Turkey Hill Elementary. Um, what you have before you is just a summary of of the different projects that we uh see as a need. A little bit of information around each of them, including current conditions. Um, some of the challenges uh that we see ahead with completing the work, the scope of work, costs, funding forces, et cetera. There are, this is a draft document for the purposes of discussion. This document does not map out. Uh, in detail, um, a timeline. Uh, for which projects should be done when grouped individually together, et cetera, et cetera. I, it was our intention um to put this information before the committee and have some discussion as to. Your thoughts on. A way forward. Uh, and we would be taking that input and reworking um. This, this document. I mean, obviously, for me, I would really love to be able to bring it back to this group for a final acceptance of the document, ideally. The last meeting, by the last meeting in June. Um, obviously, this is a. Topic that we would continue to discuss, but at least we would bring closure to. The the writing of this particular document. Um, and once it's, you know, written in its final form and accepted. It's a document that would be public and would be shared with um. Other parties in town uh that that may find this information useful uh in their planning. For the building use. And a and a plan, long-term, short-term, for. The Turkey Hill as a school building. We. We know that we have some challenges. Because when we reach a certain. Investment threshold. Into renovations in the building. And we trip a certain. Percentage. Of the value of the building. We will now be required to to bring the building up to code and be ADA compliant. Which means. Several of these projects on their own and estimated cost right now. Would trip that threshold and therefore. Require us to. Do multiple of the projects that are that are listed here, so that that's one of the significant hurdles. So we can certainly talk about. That threshold in a little bit more detail, um. But but there are some projects on here that would not contribute to that threshold. Um, there are, we do have the the projects that were funded through. The capital plan that was just approved. Uh, at annual town meeting, we're carrying them on here so that we're we're documenting the. The value of these projects because. These monies and these projects will contribute to that threshold. Um, so we we need to be strategic in how we approach this. You know, it, there are several ways to look at this, um. There is a possibility that we're doing multiple large projects all at one time, which would require a significant investment on the part of the town. If any of these projects. Are eligible for MSBA uh reimbursement. Um, and we accept that reimbursement, we would be making a commitment to keeping this building open as a school for ten years. Um, so there are, there are some. Challenges here. So I'll. I'll open it for questions and comments, and I think as your questions are put on the table. Uh, we can all contribute to answering those, um, and I think that that will help. Shape the discussion. Uh, rather than. Me going through everything.
Yeah, okay.
And and Mister uh Cassidy is uh screen sharing the document for the benefit of the public.
Okay, good.
So. Who would like to have been in this discussion?
Throw something small, just to, uh, I'm sure I'll have more, but just initially when you said that the ten years, I think that's been the dilemma too of like, okay, do we get MSBA money? But looking at the backgrounds, uh, on page three, it mentions really the. That Turkey Hill been kept operational until the year at least twenty thirty-six, twenty thirty-seven, so you look at the ten-year. It's like, okay, twenty twenty-six. Would be fine to still do that. Ten-year money, so I feel like maybe it's not as much of an issue, maybe we do search out MSBA money. In the next few years to try to get a lot of this done.
So one of the challenges with with that idea right now. Is that MSBA has suspended monies into some of these um. Energy uh rapid repair uh programs. So right now, all of their money is going towards. New builds or significant renovations. Um, and. Along the thinking that that you just outlined, if we made a commitment and and invested the money right now and then kept the building open for ten years. Um, the challenge potentially is that we're spending. Many millions of dollars. Now to keep it open and operating ten years. That would require a commitment of those monies relatively soon on the horizon. From the town, and we know that the town is uh really deeply exploring a plan uh to renovate um. And identify uses for the different. And identify uses for the different municipal buildings that currently house, um, different departments. Here in town, so. If, if their planning moves forward and that is the first financial investment that is made, that delays. When monies would potentially be available. For a, a large renovation project, so it delays now that ten-year out window. Um, not knowing exactly what the timeline might look like for the municipal. Building plans and the investment there. Uh, you know, it kind of makes it even more challenging then for us to. To think about the timeline. And what might make sense? If, if that makes any sense.
Yes.
Anybody else? Mr. Beadmore, go ahead.
No, I've got a lot to say on this. Um. So in, in full transparency. The superintendent and the chair and Mr. Cassidy and I met, I discussed this in some detail this morning. Um, and, and I want to start with saying. First of all, thank you. I know that there's, I think the, my Zoom just went out, so I don't know if anybody else's, but. Um. I know that an extraordinary amount of work has gone into this already, and I want to say thank you. I'm cognizant that this is a gigantic project. Um. That being said, when you look at that, when you begin to look at this through the lens of. Okay, what, what are the systems that are likely to go that are going to be catastrophic? Okay, what do we actually have in terms of money to spend? Okay, what's going to trigger an ADA thing? By the way, I think we do need a little bit more expose on. What the ADA compliance ramifications really are in terms of costs. Um. I feel like I've just been given a jigsaw puzzle and I'm blindfolded. And I'm just feeling the edges of the pieces, not really knowing what the picture is or how to put them together. Um, and this needs to be put into the other context that the superintendent briefly began to describe. Which is. We are trying to maneuver this. In the context of municipal building committee. That is very likely to suck up most, if not all, of the town's excludable debt capacity. Meaning we can't go out and borrow fifteen million dollars to do this. Um, oh, there's another lens. What's the impact on the operations of the schools when we do anything in here? Another edge to my blindfold and jigsaw puzzle.
So the, the challenge becomes there, um, th- there may be some projects that can, um, be completed. During a summer, uh, closure. Um, some projects may need to be completed in a two-year phase so that. Portions can be completed during a summer closure. And then no disruption to, you know, the typical school year. Um, but other projects, if they. If we, if we get into that tripping of ADA and have to now multiple pro- big projects are coming into play. Um, the building is relatively small. Um. It, it would be a significant challenge, uh, and honestly, from an engineering lens, I don't even. It would, it would likely add significant cost, um, if we were to only work on one part of the building at a time. So in other words, we're gonna. Take care of all of the, the unit event. Units and classrooms on the second floor. We're going to close the wing. Where are we displacing all of those classrooms on the second floor? For an extended period of time. We may have some contractors and engineers come in and say, it's not feasible to do this project in phases. We, we have to tear open walls. It, it really can't be done in segments or phases. Um, then we're displacing the entire school potentially. Um. We're likely then looking at, um. Bringing in some sort of temporary classroom, whether those are trailer portable classrooms or a temporary structure. Or, um. Looking for buildings in the region that could. Service as a school for us, but then there's all that added busing cost to transport kids. Potentially out of town to a location for a school. So there. It, it, it's very tricky. Um. On paper, it looks like, oh, we could do all these big projects for in the ballpark, let's say of thirteen, fourteen million dollars. But that doesn't include the added cost for displacing. Everyone in the building for major rental like that.
Yeah. So. You know. What I, what I envision still is exactly what Mr. Jeffries described to us during. Public comment many months ago, um, that, that kind of kicked off this project and it's coming forward. Uh, and what that would be is that. While the town goes and leverages excludable debt to fund. Fixing TC Passios and. The Ritter and Town Hall and building a municipal office space on the Ritter property. I don't want to get into the hybrid, but I think people are relatively familiar with the, the gist there. Um, and in doing so, eating up a, a good chunk of our excludable borrowing capacity. That. Turkey Hill can be addressed with a very deliberate plan. Based on risk to systems, all of these other variables that I just outlined triggers, you name it. Um, in a way that can be done over a period of years. Um, where we invest a sizable portion of the capital plan. Um. Every year for the next several years, um, or some kind of. Perhaps blending that with. Non-excludable debt that we could pay off on shorter notes in a shorter period of time through the operating budget. Um, that's going to require. A lot of thought and a lot of planning and assumptions. Um, frankly, that need to be made very transparently and discussion with other boards. Uh, principally the select board and capital planning. Uh, and to some extent, the finance committee as well. Um. But I think that where we're currently at is we have a shopping list, but we don't really have the recipe yet to bake the cake. I'm mixing my metaphors now. Um. And we need to be able to describe how that cake is going to get baked. With a little bit more. Color, uh, I guess. Um. And, and we need our process to be a little bit collaborative as well, meaning. We need to obviously, as a committee, talk this through. But it also needs to include. People like Mr. Jeffries, who first brought this idea to us, uh, probably needs to include. You know, various incarnations of the capital planning committee over the next several years. Needs to include the town manager, frankly, and, and the reason being is. The way we do capital in Lunenburg is it's largely controlled by the town manager. Uh, and administered and orchestrated by the town manager. So this is a, a plan that the town manager has to be. A gigantic stakeholder. Yeah. Um. But that is, I mean, this is not, we got to put this puzzle together with our blindfold. And, and we've got to figure out a strategy to be able to do it, and it's not easy. It's really hard. We're in a tough spot. But we are where we. Um, and so I, I would propose. And I've already pitched this to the. For the superintendent and the chair, just for discussion purposes. Is that we look at this through the lens of a couple of different scenarios. Um. Scenario one is. Let's avoid triggers at all costs. So what that probably means is looking at the big ticket items and steering away from them and seeing. What can we do to mitigate the risks of the big ticket items? Such as rather than replacing the whole HVAC system, maybe we rely on splits. Uh, for a get, you know, a period of time and, and nurse that along. Um, by the way, a lot of these triggers I understand are based on three-year windows, so. We do something soon and then do something outside of that next three years, maybe we can avoid triggers. Uh, but trigger avoidance would be lens number one that I would think this through in building out a scenario. Um, the second scenario is bite the bullet scenario. Which is. Figure out what the ADA compliance costs and impacts really are. Do that first. And then spend money on the highest risk. Biggest, you know, bang for your buck kind of investments. Um, knowing that we don't have to worry about the triggers, we can be much more pragmatic in terms of investing where the biggest risks are. Um, and that may require a better financial. Uh, commitment on the part of the town upfront. But at least we can provide some scenarios and some points of view. For the other organizations, the other stakeholders here that. I think in the absence of really illustrating that. We're going to keep, we're going to find ourselves in the same discussion we're in right now. Which is, well, what about the solar panels and what about the big plate glass windows, you know, and getting, we're focusing on minute details. Um, that are rather tactical, rather than thinking about this through some strategic lenses. Um, so those are my, those are my big thoughts, and I, I think that. You know, unfortunately, it probably, probably represents another hundred percent of the work that's already been done to figure that out and. Needing to do that in a much more condensed, uh, compressed timeframe. But i- in all honesty, I'm just trying to be pragmatic in terms of. What I think was asked for by Mr. Jeffries, which is a plan. More than a shopping list. Um, and, and thinking about how we can make this sellable. And I think making it sellable is to paint a picture that people can understand. Timeline, costs. The financial engineering required to meet those costs and the impact on operations as well.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Waitman.
I, I think that's, uh, that was great. Um, just a couple things to just follow up on that. So I think it, I would agree. I think what projects, I, I want to kind of. Again, see this a little bit more detail, what projects can be done in the summer. And on capital planning, I kind of looking at the costs of, from my experience on capital planning, the, the less than million dollar projects probably. For capital planning. Uh, and really, I think a long-term capital planning idea would be nice to see like a ten or fifteen-year capital planning, literally just for Turkey Hill. And, um. Maybe potentially what jobs, what, what upgrades or projects could be subdivided? That could help us try to avoid those triggers. Like, I don't know if we can do wings, like maybe it's an HVAC wing, maybe it's a floor. Um. Where we could do it one year and then five years down the road, say, so maybe trying to get creative a little bit with the trigger avoidance, but I love the idea of. Avoiding the triggers as much as possible. And then there's the. The, the worst-case scenario, okay, what's the high risk? That's also going to trigger. That the, the high risk that we need to take care of that would cause a trigger. And are there any other remedies to the point of, okay, when do we actually need to ask the town or ask MSBA? To get this money to get this project done because it needs to get done. Real soon. Those would be my additions.
Laura, um. This is a lot of money.
Uh, yeah.
Like a staggering amount of money for. Well, it's a middle school. It's not an elementary school.
Right.
Um, and at the end of the day, we're going to do all this and it's still going to be a middle school. It's not going to be an elementary school. It's not going to be a modern elementary school, and I think we need to keep that in mind. And I think that especially, it's not an elementary school. It's not built for children of this size. Um, like my daughter is too short to reach the upper lockers. Like she ca- she can't reach the upper lockers, um, and it's little stuff like that. It's not built for children that size. It's not built for the kind of learning environment. That size, it's not built for. Learning that happens right now. A lot's changed. What year was it built?
Sixty-nine.
A lot's changed since then. I mean, a lot hasn't. So I think we also need to take into account the master plan and what. What's going to happen in the future and how much of this we want to do. Um, I really appreciate the summary. You guys did a great job with this. I appreciate the summary and how clearly everything is listed. Cause I can see things on here that I absolutely think we need to do, um. Like that window safety film. I, I think that's brilliant. Um. But there are other things that I. I just don't know if we're going to have buy-in from the community. I know that as a taxpayer, I'm looking at this and going, oh, um, I mean, it's a lot of money. For what is essentially not an elementary school.
The, um. The intent. When we spoke with them, when I have spoken since with the chair of the select board has been that. It is in the history of this community and having lived here thirty-four years, not as long as people. But having lived here thirty-four years, I would agree that the history of this community is. If we think we're going to replace something, don't keep it up, let it crash and burn. And.
And then let it sit for twenty years.
Sit and then decide, oh, we don't want to tear it down, and then you get to the point where you can't walk in without a gas mask.
You know.
So that, that wasn't good. So I think, um, what Mr. Jeffries is talking about. Is not to let this building do that. I don't think Mr. Jeffries has any intention that this is going to be an elementary school forever. I think the intention is that this building in his, his thought, and I don't like to speak that way, and that will get to my next point. His, his thought, I believe, is that this building could be used for extended work. This building could be used for some community use or something else, but not if it's falling down. And then we have to spend money to, to get rid of it. Obviously, that, that is not from the lens. Of a parent with the child who will spend third, fourth, and fifth grade in that building. Um, I taught a long time. Kids only get one shot at third grade.
Yeah.
Or fourth grade or fifth grade. And, okay, that, that's not with that lens, but my thought is with this. Is that I would like to invite Mr. Jeffries to sit. With myself and with the superintendent, me and Mr. Beadmore, because he's jumped right in this, and. Have him look at it. This is his field of expertise, which is helpful. Have him look at it with Mr. Pusiteri, with Mr. Cassidy. And, and see what the buy-in can be. Because as I have stated a million times, and I, I will do it again. Um, we are not trying to jump a new school over the municipal building plan. We are willing to stay in the queue. However, the queue has to move. And it's moving pretty slow at the moment, but the queue has to move. And these projects. Have to be worked in with that project. Otherwise, we can't let this building sit here until all the pieces of the municipal design committee are done. Because they're talking about phases, last I heard, and the phases. Depend a great deal on the availability of TC Passios as staging areas. So that when you pull apart, whatever they pull apart for us to town hall, let's say, then. Those offices get displaced into TC Passios. I don't know what happens to our kids, but anyhow. That's what happens, and, and then the extended day has to go back into. Schools, and then that causes a gymnasium problem, and there's no work to be extended. For the, um, early learning center and all those things get triggered. We have to know what they're doing and work with them. The only way to do that. Is to discuss this plan with Mr. Jeffries before we finalize it. Because if we spend all kinds of time finalizing this plan, and he says it's not going to work because whatever. Because if we spend all kinds of time finalizing this plan and he says it's not gonna work because whatever. Then it's time, good time spent, the nothing. That's my opinion, but. In my thought, the next piece here. Is to spend some time with the people who developed the plan, with Mr. Jeffries. And try and see what he sees as possibilities going forward. Then once, we have to get buy in from the select board on our decision. This is not just our decision in a. In a fishbowl, you know, they, this is a whole town problem. And we have to have the whole town. So we are willing, once again, to stay in the queue. And if this is what the queue costs, it's very expensive. It's a very expensive queue. Um but if that's what it's going to cost so that that building doesn't turn into the old primary building on Thirty School Street. And and we keep moving, then so be it. But we have to have a consolidated plan.
Yeah, I think I think that's uh important to bring up the building design committee too. Uh I was kind of waiting on it, waiting on it. Um but I also think it's also important to think about, okay, the cut the town or we have to decide like. What is gonna happen to this building in the future? Is it gonna be? Torn down or is it gonna be used? And whether it's used as a school or a community center like Mr. Jeffries has stated. I think we don't know. So again, we, my inkling is to to keep taking care of the building. We kind of have to. Community center makes sense based on my experience with the building design committee. There's more groups that are looking for space. One example, Boys and Girls Club is looking to expand. This could be a potential site. Um different community organizations, uh extended day. I know gym space is um a concern. This could, if it became the community center, we would still have the gym. And if we built another school, now we have that additional gym. So we have more space. So it kind of makes sense, in my opinion, that the building is probably gonna stay around. So I think we should, again, continue with this process. Improving, keeping it up, and also improving it. Uh it does. It is frustrating. I I agree that uh it is not. Um meant for a third through fifth graders, that it was originally designed for fifth through eighth graders. Um but I think that also has some potential too. So we look at Lunberg's expanding. Uh maybe. Maybe the grades change in the future. In the next several years, or maybe when a new school is built, that maybe this is more a five, six, seven grade that. The high school maybe doesn't, maybe it needs more room. So maybe a seventh grade comes out of the high school, middle high school. Uh maybe the primary school is gonna need to expand because of younger, younger students going into the grades. And maybe a younger grade has to come in, or maybe the new school is a younger grade where it's going two, three, four. So I think it's a lot of.
It's one thing, our school district, um that's a strength of our school district is we have been flexible. With the schools ever since I've moved to town with between the Passios and the primary and moving, we've been pretty flexible. With the buildings we have, moving things and adjusting schools based on our need. That is a strength we have.
So a bit of historical perspective here. A lot of people like to talk about how much the town's grown in the last thirty five years. In nineteen ninety, we had about, well, about about eight thousand. And we had eighteen. Excluding mine. Today we have. You know, less. And our town is fifty percent bigger than it was then. Those are just, you know, now a lot has transpired in that time. Charter school didn't exist. But. You know, we can could have, should have, we can, we can project all kinds of possibilities in terms of. How we're gonna shift grades around in the future or whatever. In in my mind, we have a need to educate kids in that building, regardless of what grade they're in. Um that building. For all of its faults, has been amazingly resilient. When you think about the amount of money that's been put in with, out of time. Uh and here we are fifty four years later and the building. Is fifty four years old, but it's not caving in on us. You know, it's it's outdated. It needs electrical. It needs water. It needs heat. It needs. Windows. It needs all of the things that you would put in with a fifty four year old building, but the building structurally, I believe, is sound. Um and it's a school. Yeah, it's not an elementary school, but it's a. And and it has meeting space, cafeteria, they have a gymnasium, it has. You know, space that was formerly used for a music space and industrial arts that could easily convert it back. There's a lot that can be done with that really down the way. We got into discussions this morning. About all kinds of, you know, potential. Well, what if we did build another school on another. Bought a land and so on and so forth, and speculated by the chairman of the select board probably several times now. Uh in meetings. The the problem with all of those scenarios is that we don't have the money to do it. Um and we don't have the borrowing capacity to do it. So. We can say, yeah, we'd love to go and build, you know, and spend twenty or thirty million dollars with the N F D A. To go build a new school. Maybe it's a, you know, the primary school's pushing. Twenty years old. You know, we could, we would have went out, built a free cave through five, through five, you know, kind of building. All of those scenarios, I think, are interesting to talk about, except for one small detail. More money. Right. So what we have is. We have the ability to spend a little bit of money regularly over a long period. And that's the reality, as I see it, right? Um, you know, short of the municipal building plan completely crashing and burning. And we say, okay, we gotta do something now and in the absence of a plan, here's one to go with. Um, I I think that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town and to the other stakeholders. To build out a feasible plan. To to maintain this building through twenty thirty seven to twenty twenty. And and figure out how to.
Um, I agree. I agree that we need to figure this out. I know that by sitting in the queue, which we will do, as long as it keeps queuing, um that. You know, it it's, we are gonna need to do this. And as I have said before, that building is like skating on thin ice because at any time. Something could go that we can't get the parts for that, have to go on eBay and try and get something that's gonna fit or whatever. Um, but I I think this, this is a very, very good. Starting point. And I think this is where we bring Mr. Jeffries into table. And then we will have um a better informed idea of what. Of what could be possible because your 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 thought of a million and a half a year for several years in the capital plan is based on. The current cash. But if the economy crashes. Well, but but if the economy crashes. Then that's not gonna work either. I mean, so you gotta, you gotta plan for something and you gotta keep. Keep the queue going. You gotta keep going. So um that would be my suggestion. As to what to do next. But I agree with Dr. Burnham. I'd like to see this, if at all possible. Wrapped up on our end. By the end of June, which would mean that we would need to meet with Mr. Jeffries, if he be amenable, which I imagine he would be. Um prior to, so that we can add his thoughts in this one. That's my thought. By all means.
When I'm looking through the priorities and you've ranked them as high and medium. It seems like two of them stand out as higher than the other highs. And they're the ones related to the fire detection and the fire suppression system. Is there, it, why are they not the number one concern?
Well, um. We didn't rank order them in in any particular way. They're just more so grouped.
Okay.
Grouped and 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 price. Um, you know, you know, the fire suppression system. Obviously, buildings never had one.
Yeah, that's crazy.
But um. Again, you know, what the what Dr. Brem said is is how they were were grouped. But I would like to make a a few comments. Uh, you know, uh, Mr. Beardmore, uh, the building, you you mentioned. It's got a, uh, the building envelope is strong. With the exception of doors and windows, and and everyone in this room is aware of it. Uh and and we all know, we got the doors are being replaced and the windows, obviously, you know, is something we'll look into. But getting back to your comment about, at some point, if we do trigger ADA, what are those costs going to be? So um on the exterior, the building is very little work that needs to get done as far as a parking lot and access and and curves and so forth. Uh, the elevator would be uh one point that we would probably have to change. Uh, but the major ADA upgrade that is gonna be required is all the bathrooms. None of the doors heading into the bathrooms are ADA compliant. None of the stalls are ADA compliant. We have some smaller bathrooms on the on the hallways. That there isn't even any room to open up those doors to make it compliant before making the inside of the room bathroom compliant. So that's not a simple solution, but that is a number. If you're looking to get. That we could bring in engineers and have this looked in, they went and designed and come up with a price to do that. If that is something that the committee is gonna look forward to or look to, that we're gonna need a price at some point if we do. One of these projects and trigger ADA, where are we now? How much money is that gonna cost? But that's gonna be a huge disruption in the building. Because all the floors in the bathrooms need to be torn up to make the stalls wider and uh and so forth, so. Uh, we, I, again, we don't have a number for that, but um. You know, that's something we can think about doing.
I think we need it.
Are you saying none of the bathrooms at Turkey Hill are ADA?
That is correct.
What are our students doing? Who need it?
Well, typically for ADA compliancy, you need wheelchair access.
Okay.
And none of the doors are wide enough by code to meet that. Yes, a wheelchair could still fit in some of these doors and in some of the stalls. But they are today, they're not ADA compliant. So when you trigger ADA compliancy, it's all those facilities that need to be brought up to code.
Okay.
It's not like they can't be used, they're just, they're not ADA compliant.
Okay. But can student and wheelchairs use the bathroom?
I I I believe so. I don't know. We we have any students with wheelchairs. I haven't heard to have them.
Yeah, I can tell you that.
Any issues, but.
In in my mind, that is a pretty critical piece of information because we're dancing around this trigger. And we don't know what the impact is of the trigger. We really don't.
We're dancing around the bill.
Well, it's not just the bill.
Yeah.
It's. You know, when we're talking about disruption of the building. You know, I can imagine not being a building person, like. Maybe we just using exterior conduit, we can figure out our electrical problem without shutting down the building. Maybe we can, you know, do room by room and the blowers and not shut down the building for the heat. When you're talking about breaking down walls, that's a big project in a building like that. So there's, you know, everything on here has. Impact on operations. Issues that we need to be thoughtful to.
So if there's no other questions or comments or. Um, when we need next steps.
I think we should invite Mr. Jeffrey.
I I think that is the next step.
So I would propose that. The chair and the superintendent facilitated meeting with Mr. Jeffries. A pre-meeting.
Yes.
Before a meeting with. To work through some of these issues. I I honestly think that some of the work that I outlined relative to those two scenarios, my. Avoid triggers and big bill scenario, I I think are inevitable.
Oh, yeah.
Whether that happens before or after meeting, or maybe we need, you know, maybe twice with this, I don't know. But I I think that we're not painting a picture here that it's incumbent upon us.
So I I would agree that a a small meeting because we don't want him to walk in and throw all kinds of things at him. We need to give him an opportunity to digest the information. And um see what he thinks. So if the committee is in agreement. Then we will invite Mr. Jeffries to come and speak. Um with us and the powers that be to understand all these numbers and and such and um. And see what his thoughts are on the next step forward. Because we have to all walk forward together, no matter how you look at it. So if we are in agreement, then this is discussion. We don't need to vote on it, but if everybody's okay with that. Brian, do you, you okay with that? All right. So I guess that would be our next, our next spot on this. I cannot thank you enough for the amount of work that went into this project and trying to figure this all out. Um, this is not easy under. Um smooth consequences, but when you're dealing with old buildings and you're dealing with. Patchwork stuff that has been done a million times to try and keep it together. Um, it it's very difficult. So I thank you both very much for the amount of time and effort that went into this plan. And um it will be back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, we are on to committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? Brian.
Yeah, so the building design committee had a presentation with the select board last Tuesday. Um, went well. They had some questions, uh but definitely seemed like the plan was to go into a fall town meeting with. Uh, plan to get funding to start the design process and also plan to kind of put all the projects together. A timeline. That seemed productive. And then Mr. Jeffries did mention about the uh Turkey Hill potentially becoming a. Um. Community center, as there was discussion about like, oh, could Boys and Girls Club? Be a part of this building design process. And we had said it it had been, but it's. It's tough to get everybody in and the cost of facilities and new space is so expensive. So I think that. Again, community center idea was thrown out there again and Boys and Girls Club as a potential. To go into that building as well, but obviously other things as well.
Right. Okay, great. Um. I will give my last incon report. And it is that the meeting tomorrow evening has been canceled because there's no form. So so they go. So we are set with that.
You know, anybody who has the slightest interest in town government.
Please encourage them to.
Put in their name on the finance committee. They really need bodies and ideally. People who are political and analytical.
How many people are on it right now?
I don't know if Caesar is a has. So for for the Senate Member Committee.
Oh.
So they need everybody there to have a quorum.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, so that's why they have to cancel. Somebody can't make it apparently. And I mean, that happens. But when you need everybody there to get a quorum, that creates major trouble with any committee. So. So once again, all the town hall, if you would like to be on incon, please. Okay, so um I think our topics for future discussion were pretty. We have the revisit of this. We have the discussion about bullying that has to come back. Um, we have the end of the year coming up, end of the year information from teaching and learning. We have that stuff coming up. I think we're pretty full. Is there anything else anybody else would like to add?
The the football sign.
Oh, the football sign, yeah. Football sign. See if we can get that one on the next one.
When does the next school committee calendar become a thing?
That's a weak question. We usually try to set it before the last meeting uh in June.
So my reason for asking is, and I I have not done the work that I would need to do to be able to make the ask. But there are at least a few policies that I would like a plan to. But there are at least a few policies that I would like a plan to review. Next year. And I don't know if that should be a calendar thing, because I know we periodically review policies, but I don't, I'm not quite sure what the process is.
So if there are some that you would like to be looked at, if you could send me a list of the policies, then we'll take them up. In policy set committee.
Okay, so that doesn't need to be scheduled.
Right.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, because we generally can get to those in a minute.
Okay.
Um, okay. Well, then that's where we are. So then I would need a motion.
This, did we skip over public comment?
Oh, I did. Okay, is there any public comment? I do that all the time at the end. I guess I decided I want to keep going. Um. Is there any public comment from the public? I do see a phone with the hand up, so. So, thank you, Brian, for telling me, and whoever that is with the phone, you may speak.
Hi, this is Rhonda Licio. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Rhonda Licio, okay, one eighty one Reservoir Road. Um, I wasn't privy to the document that you were referencing, because I'm on the phone, um, but. My review of the Turkey Hill needs, it was estimated that the cost would be around thirteen point five million dollars.
That's about what we have here, Rhonda.
Okay, good. Um. And what I would like to say is, the current municipal design, um, hybrid model. Calls for thirteen point six million dollars to renovate TCP, which is primarily community space. And my opinion as a taxpayer is, uh, regardless of what the powers that be may. May want to do, I have a hard time prioritizing community space over. Uh, the needs of the, we, we have to provide a school building for, for these students. So I will not be in favor of, um, the hybrid model. Being funded, uh, funding the TCP renovation. I think that we should be funding the Turkey Hill renovation. And the TCP renovation should be done over gradually with the capital plan. Just my opinion. Um, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Are there any other public comments?
I wanted to congratulate Peter and Laura. Welcome to the.
Um, I, I just wanted to comment, it's, as I've said in here many times, I spend a lot of time on sidelines, uh, watching sporting events and. Um, this spring. I, I have spent a lot of time on sidelines for our track and field program at our high school. And I have to tell you, some of the most extraordinary moments have occurred. Um, at those events over the course of the last several weeks. Um, and I've often commented here that Lunenburg does a great job when it comes to. Teaching, you know, sportsmanship, sportsmanship and, and how to. How to behave in situations like this. Um, some of the things that I've witnessed this spring are not just Lunenburg, but everybody in our league and district and the way they handle themselves. My, my point in saying this is, if you have a child who is not an athlete and is not inclined to do a sport. Still encourage him, uh, to get active. If, if they absolutely do not want to do a sport, and my daughter was one of those kids who. We tried to get her to do sports and it just, we eventually gave up. But she was a musician and she got involved in the music program and really thrived in that program and the theater program. Um, boy, you know, we're not able to offer every program under the sun because of our size. But the programs that we do offer are so valuable to our kids and, and to their families. Um, and I just, you know, my, my thanks goes out to people like the A D and all of our coaches. And administration who support these programs, the parents who reach out of pocket, and family members who reach out of pocket to, to support these programs. Um, we're doing incredible things out there, and I'm so proud.
Great. Thank you for that comment. All right. So then, I think now that I was reminded about public comments, because I keep forgetting. Um, it is time to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation. The negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So do I have a, uh, motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session and adjourn following executive session.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.